Part of absence.
Yeah.
You guys have. When I was watching Friday morning news, part of the scroll across the bottom is astronaut Joe Adel spent saving. And I know he, you know, had that little plane that he used to uh kind of buzz around. I can't think he probably built that thing.
He did. He was big into rockets.
I was gonna say they made rockets.
Walk there and get him a bath.
Yeah. Yeah, for your Iowa history. Yep. Yep, rockets. And I think we did a. Give you a hot room. If you favor. Off cam. You did?
Black ball?
We did. It wasn't black ball. It's a full size.
I know, I was really excited.
Was that guy in Fox class?
And then Austin's always had the tribute Fridays with the Will Davies.
A lot of the.
All right, six o'clock, call the meeting in order. All right, so uh if it changes to the agenda at all. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Fair to see I. Approve, go through the consent items. About the year.
Love to.
But it's good news for.
It's good news. We finished uh the year under budget. Uh I believe by about two percent. That might fluctuate a little bit uh when we um. Uh started adjusting for some year end things, you know, uh some bills that maybe hadn't been paid quite yet um. Wouldn't we finished out the year or whatever? So but um but that equals to just under a hundred and seventy one thousand dollars. So that's. That's a good savings to have, so. I just anticipate that it'll continue forward, but I know that you guys have had to make some hard decisions over the last year or so and. And I appreciate that you uh were listening and and took the hard road, but I think we'll see it come to fruition. You may notice that you don't have balance sheets um in your packet. Um and that's generally because it's year end and those balances will not really even be correct anyway because of the. Um posting that we have to do counts payable, accounts receivables coming in um but you'll uh. Well, you'll start getting them once we get the audit done or um the C A R uh which is our certified data report that has to know the Iowa Department of Ed has to be done by September fifteenth. So um we'll start those back up again um when we know that those numbers are. It's generally um as far as those numbers go, it's generally pretty quiet right now. Um you'll see a big bump um in our uh September bills um because of the holding off to um for uh. Buying curriculum textbooks, things like that till after July. And so then, you know, the bill has to come and then we have to pay. So generally you'll see a bump in this September. Um as well as contracts go, you go back on contract then in September as well. So then you have to pay again.
Questions?
I'm good. I'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye. 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 Say no. Send in the approved correspondence. Get on that.
Uh yeah, sorry. Um this is the Sponheimer family donated a very generous donation of just. Over fifteen thousand dollars and it was um specifically um to purchase um sound shells uh for the music department. So. You know, when you see a choir and you see those backdrops and they're sort of angled over a little bit, it's kind of an acoustic kind of a thing. So yeah, so. They've already, they've been purchased and delivered and. I don't know if they're somewhere around here. They were a little worried about where they were in store, but that's a good problem to have. So very generous of them. Yeah, it was.
So like, so we try to keep it just so FYI, we'd keep track of about three minutes or so per person, but uh Sue's been through the wringer, so.
We do try to keep it short, but sometimes the topic can, and since I'm trying to combine some things here. Since one of the items on your agenda is um being tabled for the previous month, but. Involves this topic of um student abuse and a whole list of things that potentially go along with this. Uh I thought I would kind of forward what I originally provided for. The April meeting and then got sick that very day and wasn't able to be here. So starting with that, one thing I I saw that I really, really liked this year was that anonymous. Survey that went out because and I know that um. Uh the the abuse and everything, even you guys remember even you were in school because you're with my kids and even I remember things going on. So it's been going on for a very long time. But this is anonymous. If you actually file a complaint at the school, it gets harder. Those kids become more victimized. Than if they didn't say anything, and that's been going on for a very, very long time. So having an anonymous survey, if people start feeling. Secure enough to provide additional information, it gives you more to work with, yet you can potentially have some productive conversations. If you look at the top right hand side here on the board, the very bottom one says save and collaborative culture. You don't entirely have that. It is as if you aren't trying to work on it here with a lot of activities the teachers are going through on their Monday days. But I know talking to some parents and dealing with my grandson too, if you've got a. A group that's been assigned in the classroom and the students don't want to deal with particular students. They won't work. They'll do a whole bunch of things with that student and the teacher has got to figure out some way to handle that and. Not all of them have the skill levels to do that. So that causes additional problems. You also have a number of other things where if it's reported, other students start taking additional action and the student becomes even more victimized than before. And I have lots of documentation on that and there are lots of parents that know about it. So that's why last year I brought you some legislation, the previous legislature legislature that passed that I was thrilled with. Some people on the education committees had provided it to me. It was signed into law and I started asking questions, started at the ADA, worked my way up to the Department of Education. Four months later, I finally got a response from lawyers at the State Department of Education telling me. I was totally wrong. That isn't what it said. I had a copy of the law, it was signed in the law, it was on the books. They're trying to control liability. So it doesn't cost them. I understand that. I tried talking county attorney. They're on the same page as that. So it's challenging talking to the sheriff. To try to even turn in some document and evidence because they will, the attorneys do not want to do anything. And that's part of the problem. So now what I'm telling parents, anyone that wants to actually take some action. Okay, go to the fence because if you go to the U S Department of Education website, you can find assistance. For uh student abuse and everything. You can also find it through ESA because it's a civil rights violation. And if you've got enough documentation, even the sheriff or the attorney won't take. It is possible. They will start processing this and they can either set up a mediation with your school. Or just take you to federal court and try to get state laws and attitudes changed, just briefly to sum up here. This is no different than those um. Decades when you guys were in school. Where we had a system of memorization. Anyone that didn't learn that way was considered damaged goods, you know, so they didn't test everyone. They didn't count all test scores. They didn't count the low ones. So they were doing things to make it appear to be working, which is why, but no child left behind was passed in two thousand and two. They took that all out. You have to test everyone. You have to start treating them all the same. Then twenty fifteen, they passed ESA, every student, every student succeeds act. So they're trying to get this adjusted so that students aren't victimized and they can really access education. And then you can actually be effective at that bottom row there and help your teachers. So I sent in the information to you, hoping you might be able to find a way for this anonymous survey to provide you with some information for some dialogue that you can help students. To try to help them along and not be violated like this. That was the whole point of what I was saying. Thank you. I know I wouldn't be on my train of mind, but I tried. I've been longer before, you know.
Thanks, Sue. On to membership on the board. So yeah, basically we just need to approve our five member board, our current members. So just need a motion, motion to approve the five member board, the current members.
I'll make that motion. Continue to have a five member board with Corey Robinson, President John Northrup, Tyler Akins, Ashley the Chair and Ray Anson.
That's it. Yeah, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Say no. On the board has been approved. On to the level one, level two investigator for student abuse. Did we find out a little more info there?
We did, yeah. Um I have all the county and they will appoint a level two investigator for us. Um just listen on our tier likes and be with people level two. Um and then our school nurses are level one investigator for student abuse.
For checking into that. So we have motion to approve the level one and level two investigators.
I'll motion to approve the level, the level two investigators.
Oh, there was a I.
Aye.
Say no. Our statement has been approved. Review our board policies, so. Uh we do, it was for two months, is that right?
Yeah, um in in theory it's three, so I'm giving you the heads up now to start looking at fours through through sixes. And then we generally have two readings. So the first reading will be in August and then the second reading will be in September. The first reading is generally, if you find anything, um bring it to my attention. I will actually go through it with. A pretty fine tooth comb. Um and then um any updates that have come. If we haven't adopted them, I'll review them and send them on to Mr. Peterson to see if it's something that. We do need to take care of or we already have one or we need to change one. And if so, we'll put all of that in those documents. Um but it's just helpful if there's another set of, it's great reading. So if, you know, if there's another set of eyes or something on it, it starts to blur a little bit, so. Um any help is greatly appreciated. So then I'll make the changes. And then if there's no additional changes in September, then after the second reading, we'll just approve them as amended or as changed or as added or.
And everything that has been like required and changed and so much you noted and studied in there already.
If they're not in there already, I'll still check them. So I'll go through since um the last one we did fourth through sixes. Normally we try to keep up on those throughout the year, um but I'll go through to double check that there's nothing that we're missing or anything like that. Okay?
And and while these are on a cycle, um I A S B will let us know legislative changes that need to occur in board policy on an annual basis. So you may approve it right now. Um and and six months from now, they may make a change where we have to come back and revise it again. And that's all online now. There are books.
It is online, yeah. Um we're working on a transfer of ownership that may be a little daunting, but we'll get it done.
So are we kind of done with those big books?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, as little people. Sometimes, sometimes. I I don't know, like you look at my policy book and you can tell where the warrant pages are and I'm like, oh yeah, that's where that is. So I can get to it a lot faster than my fingers.
The one thing, I mean, you guys are trying to do the transfer of ownership, but if there was a copy of it, it was just for us that we could denote our comments. We can, everybody can see as you're going through. So I was, I was trying to go through and I was trying to figure out like, how do I best. Show you. So I was like, hey, we try to take screenshots and kind of stuff where it'd be a lot easier if I would just drop a comment.
It's not. The only thing that I can think of is like, let's say you're in section four oh two point six. And you see some edits that need to be made if you make a copy of that one.
No, I was.
In Google Docs, yeah.
Sorry, it's in Google Docs, yeah. It looks like it's a Word, a Word document that was uploaded into.
And you can turn on edits there, but then everybody will see those. Yeah, so. Let me do some checking.
That's okay. And I can keep doing what I was doing. That's.
But but for sure, you can make a copy, you know, click on it and write and do your, so, because I don't want to have screenshots and all that stuff or whatever. You see what I'm saying?
I do, yeah. I was thinking that that way as a group, for saying, hey, I suggest it. It's easy to see.
Well, I felt like, I feel like if you make a copy there, then the same people already can see it.
She had to share that.
Well, you'd have to share. It wouldn't pain, yeah.
Anybody with access that would.
Yeah, yeah, it's already. What'd you say?
Well, I was saying that way that everybody would have access.
And nobody else in the same place, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly something to keep in mind as we figure out how to switch ownership at the electronic level um from the prior H R person, so.
Okay.
Are we keeping a hard copy though too yearly up to date or?
I have a book that is hard copy that I just keep available. There is still a copy in the. Library also, so.
That's up there too, as we may.
And I really haven't actually, the the members that left, their books are here, so you're. Long to have those too, you know, it's, yeah, it's a little daunting, but so and you had one too, but I think Mike. Given, given it.
I think that's hard for it. Some people want to keep a bug. Did I get that one updated or?
Yeah. So in my mind, in case, you know, something happens where and somebody hits the wrong button or something, I do keep a hard copy for myself. Yeah, I I keep it updated for myself and then.
I could be that guy.
Well, we did take editing rights away from you. I'm just kidding.
And that may be why it's actually a Word document uploaded into Google Docs because they sell the original in 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 a, in Word format, so you know.
In a local.
Someone can go on there and and mess up your Google Doc, but you've still got the original.
Put that on your nightstand tonight.
In case you need to. Obviously.
Move on to open enrollment.
Nothing there? Oh yeah, we have one in, sorry. It's um Victoria Cromer. For her daughter Gentry. Same first grade from Newton. Um she is, um you may remember last month, um Mr. Peterson talking about the new open enrollment laws, the new old. The old new laws that go back into place. So she actually um sent this to us on June twenty eighth.
So anything after this can only be kindergartners?
Right.
September first, okay. I have October first in my head.
Yep.
Still accept kindergartners, but nothing after kindergarten, right?
Right, it would have to be for the following year. Yeah, we can take them all year long. It depends on what year they can.
But when you could, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's technically not true. The the resident district would have to release them usually for good cause. So if they would do that, we could still accept them.
Okay.
But the the way it works goes back to kind of to what we were doing prior to the last few years in that they have to request it through the resident district. And they can approve it. Um there's about twelve reasons, good cause reasons on there that they can approve an open enrollment after the date. Uh but we can't act on anything um until they approve it.
And they're not going to approve it because then the money's leaving and.
Probably fall to kids. Well, we've had it in the past and in. Certain circumstances.
Right.
If it fills one of those categories, like if there's a change in address or if there's a documentation of, you know, bullying, harassment. Or it's been filed at the level, at the state level or, you know, there's like twelve.
Yeah, but you could still see somebody come in at like semester after winter break or whatever, right? An open enrollment.
If they, if they. I would say the 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 most frequent one is a change of address where they're just moving and they're moving into another district, but they want to keep going here.
Yeah.
Or to where they were.
You have a motion to approve the open enrollment question?
So moved.
Second. For the favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Say no. Open enrollment's approved. Like much for personnel at the moment?
Nope. We're, we're taking pictures. It's not a last one.
Are there any open positions right now?
Um not teacher positions, you know, um I mean, there's, you know, coaching and supplementary contracts are always a revolving door.
It's got a little town, maybe, but give me like a little master and be like the count of how many guys.
I can't, I can't tell you how many times somebody walks in and out, usually Mr. Vaughn, I'm just like, okay. Do we have somebody in high school volleyball? And if we do, who is that? You know, because I can't, I can't, I mean, we were just talking about that the other day. Who was that person, you know, it's um. And that will be, it is.
Safety and security, if there's any updates there.
Don't really have anything. I just were on the quarter, so.
There have been any follow ups to the meeting that we were in?
So one of the things that um I've done this week is look into some of those comments and concerns and. We have stop the bleeding kits that we do need to get installed. Um and we're in the process of reviewing what our A Ds look like from where they're at to how many we have. And there probably will need to be some changes made there, I would say.
Procedural.
Yeah, and maybe location wise, you know, we've got one in the wellness center um. But that that door, I think, is locked at times, so we might need to reevaluate where the A Ds located. They certainly probably need one in there, but um. We may have have to look into adding one.
First, just going to say, are those free to us or?
Uh some, some might be, depends. Sometimes they are.
Be a very interesting.
I just wanted to, um. That was a good conversation we had. It was like two meetings ago with the library. We're all squared away on that, how that's going to be handled now. I mean, I think Marie was. Okay with it. And I think we were all saying.
Yeah. Um and that's where we're headed with it. We're on hold with false doors. Um to get this moved over there, then to get the new reader on the wellness center. We're trying to tag team that all in the same day or whatever. So we're a little bit at their. At their mercy to to get out here. So it's been a month that I contacted them. They just took me up on the list. We're on the list. Um this summer, we've been, we basically have locked down this store completely. Um which normally we would, but we've been very careful about not propping it and. And, you know, in the summertime and we've got a note that, you know, it says the school's closed, so you can't be in here unless the library's open or you have a coat chair that. And then they're supposed to be able to double swipe it. And generally it wouldn't even be this door then. It would be like the high school door because. They need to get in the gym, the weight center, with uh weight room or whatever, so.
From with all of the changes in personnel, one of the things we must mention is who's like going to be the contact for emergencies with the white person. Because at one point, damn, or something, they said in that meeting and they don't have a new one designated, so. Is there somebody who decided to designate who will be on site full time? And if they're not, who's their backup? Like, has that kind of stuff been discussed at all?
As far as what type of emergency are you?
Uh that was when Kelly was bringing it up from the EMS and fire. They would like a point person.
So so I think what you're talking about is like after hours, when our um security company um receives an alarm or something. And then they're, they need a point person to call to say, is it really an alarm? Do we need to call nine one one or not?
I think the point person to get people into the building too.
Yeah, like if there is an after hours.
Yeah.
Whether it's after hours or, it was something that Kelly brought out as a concern and he wanted to make sure that he would open up like a relationship with whoever that was going to be sure of that.
Sure, and I thought it was a good point. Sure, they could also be the one that helps with if there's any updates. Yeah, so um I actually happened to be in Michigan on vacation and and the fire department was called to the school. Um and it was because um A D P got a call and um Bill is the first contact person. Point person for for that. Um and um I. Through communication, he had said he was fifteen minutes away, but then, I mean, he doesn't know if there's a fire here. He was new, you know, and so um a. Few of them came up and went walked through it. They have a key, so um they walked through it and didn't see anything and. Turns out, well. We thought maybe some kids have been in here. Um we did find some kids on the camera, but it didn't look like they had been in the building. Um so. We do have a contact person like for after hours for that, but and then it just goes down the list. Like I'm on that list and. Mr. Peterson will be on that list um as we switch that out. And so I would imagine. When you're not here, then you'll have to, I would assume it's the principals or.
Yeah.
Somebody. Um, the point of contact probably still need to be me actually, and then it's gonna have to probably be directed from there depending on what the issue is.
And I don't have necessarily an issue yet.
That's a valid point, but, um, number of commuters and things we have, you know, I live in Ankeny, but it's Newton, so. Uh, it, it, I mean, it's still, it's still gonna fall on us either directly or indirectly.
Yeah, so it's communicated to. We will still use grounds of transportation.
Yeah, you can click on this. It's a hot document, I mean, I was still working on it at five thirty, so we can get it before then. Just walk you through this, or do you want to do that?
Um, so, really what we're looking at is projects one and two for this summer, and then a contingency plan on. How we're going to address some that did not get addressed this summer moving forward. Um, the concrete project in and of itself is probably gonna need to be a phased project, which probably. Is the best idea anyways, just from an expense standpoint, because there's a lot of it to take care of out there. Um, so if you click on that project one, that's what that's talking about, these are addressing for the most part, um, those areas, John, that were marked off. With paint, um, the last time we met. And so you've got three bids there, um, for Midwest Foundation Repair, Concrete Polyfix and Hay Construction. Um, that'll, that are addressing those areas, that's what those bids entail. There, no, if you get into the bids themselves, you'll, there are some slight differences there, um, you know, and, and this. Final bid there, um. Their solution is just replacement of all of those areas. Um, where you'll see in the Midwest Foundation Repair, it's not just tearing out, putting down new, right?
What is it, what's wrong? And you're clicking on this.
So you say. Like a, like a mud jack procedure then?
Kind of, um, oh, the bids, they're talking about the bids themselves, yeah, but.
So the cheaper one, I'm sorry. That's just the, like a leveling?
Correct, yeah. Um, leveling in some of those areas, and then I think some polyseal in some different areas as well, and then of course the one area that's not that simple, right? That has the damage, that would be replaced. But it's kind of focused on that. So there's going to be more down the road.
And then, did that include the, the top of the stairs that, out of the high school?
None of these do.
Cause that was kind of core, and I've looked at that, and it, it's settled, the sidewalk is settled from the stair.
So it's enough of a.
Well, it, it goes from on the east side, it's level, to on the west side, it's probably an inch or so. Up to where the stairs start, so, but that, the concrete's really not cracked, and we looked at that, and that's where. If we can do the mudjacking or something, we would fix that.
Did you happen to put an X there?
No, my pain thing ran.
That's okay, that was one of his guiding forces. I don't know, I wasn't paying attention, I was trying to get it right here, but we had to pick and choose a little bit between to make sure that we were matching apples to apples. And so, um, we felt like if. Over a three year, it looks like it's probably gonna be somewhere around twelve thousand dollars or so, if we were averaging out, it's probably gonna be about four thousand or so. If we spread over three years, so. In theory, it's a little bit more if you're doing those ones, um, but we at least know what we're talking about with those, and then we could clear up the rest of it.
So this would be the.
Phase one.
Out here, yes, and then in front of the. Doors that go in by the music room.
Yes, yeah, and then we'll need to prioritize, okay, what's next, and then be sure that when we do that, that we're communicating clearly to those companies coming in to bid on this.
What they're.
Exactly what they're bidding on, so we don't end up with three bids, this guy bid everything around the school, this guy just bid this, so. Um, that'll be part of the process we use, we'll need to make sure we use move forward.
Then that's something they could still get done, like.
That would be the goal, yes, yeah.
The first phase.
I think with what's involved in that phase, especially with the solutions from a company like Midwest Foundation Repair, it's, it would be able to be done. Uh, cause you're not talking about a ton of tear out and playing new concrete, something like that, pouring and stuff, so. Second project is the bleachers, you got two bids there, um, that's for East Gym Bleacher Replicsmen.
What's the, what's the repair that for twenty two, like some new rollers or?
Uh, yeah, so they were talking about, um, we talked about that, um.
All new motors, I know.
Yeah, let's see, uh, four motors with baskets and wiring and pendant. Um, also in the core, there was labor for repair, this is a lot going on with them from coming off the wall to whatever else underneath. If you choose the option of adding motors to the existing bleachers, there is no guarantee they will operate smoothly, given the condition of the current bleachers. We can only do so much to fix the existing set, and I know that they were worried about this kind of a thing when you were rolling them in and out, so.
Because these aren't currently.
Right.
Come loose or broke or bent or something, they're all just.
Yeah, and they are, I mean, they're pulling away from the. The, the bleachers quite a ways, I mean, it's a.
Well, that was nineteen ninety seven.
It makes me a little nervous on the liability for having. In Townsend, um, they're the ones who, um, who we worked with, um. To replace our bleachers and all that stuff after the Dray Show out of the sports complex, so. I feel like they're really easy to work with, they know what we're looking for. So I've never even written this H two I, I think that's where this H two I, so.
So financially, if we do that phase one. And do the new bleachers. We're okay? Trying to stay in the past dollar wise for. Projects.
Yeah, yeah, if you, um, look at, you know, the last previous years, we were a little light. On purpose, you know, to sort of get us. Um, back up where we need to be, um, where I feel comfortable spending money, so, yeah, I, I don't have a problem. Was spending that.
As I see is the H two I, it looks like there's seven rows of bleachers, six.
I feel like this.
But I also don't know.
I mean, does six give you wider?
That's both sides, they're just the.
Cause this other one also.
On the H two I?
Yeah, I was thinking that we were questioning if we needed that number of wheelchair spaces. And, oh, it had like the score, scorer's table, for example, that was.
Yeah, I mean, I see that it's free.
H two I says completion not later than one one twenty five, so I mean, that's. Probably gotta get them before school, obviously, I mean, that's probably a pretty good project.
Well, we were hoping that it would. Don't know, I guess.
Well, it's six weeks old.
If we can, I mean, I guess we've done some of that stuff over winter break or something too. They can't get it done, but.
Yeah, that's what I was saying too, and I think our winter break is right, pretty close to two weeks this year. Yeah, so I'd say you're, soon as you get to the schools. Yeah, so I, I was talking to Mr. Vaughn about this yesterday and. Anyway, um. He said we have four or five middle school volleyball games scheduled for again there, and he said I would.
I mean, there's that, but also they don't have nowhere to practice, or you'd have to go back to the.
I mean, they still, I think it's really still used at the gym. As long as you're time crap laying on the floor, right? I don't know how messy the job would get, if you have a process, I don't know.
It would be interesting to know how long the turnaround time is, yeah, I would think if they're doing this day in and day out, something like this would have to get pretty quick. That's the thing about how efficient rovers are.
Had a decent enough crew.
Had to use the. One piece side bleachers for a game or two, and there's not many there, it gets kind of close, but.
I think that one, if, if, if we move forward, whichever one we move forward with, just ask them when their family, we've decided that. Or Mr. Vaughn.
Yeah, if they say, oh, it'll take us a week, then yeah, just shoot for Christmas break or something, and we. Or if they get here, of course, August, all right, cool.
Otherwise, volleyball's done pretty early. Especially in middle school, it'll be done in October, and you have at least a whole break, I think, before basketball starts. So we like.
Since they who gives that, okay, that's.
Next big thing, I suppose. So that's probably part of why these went to crap, if you start jamming them by hand, you know.
I just shot the owner, um, of Townsend, a text, and I'll see if he replies, usually he's pretty good about.
You ask him about timeframe and, and if they're motorized.
I didn't ask about motorized, but I asked about, um, turnaround time, and also if they'd be able to install before school started, so. If he replies to me, I'll. It isn't, or it is.
Moving on down to that sign, where are we at on that deal? We were kind of hoping to get it done before graduation, but.
I spoke with Bill about that today and told him to call, who's our company with that one?
Oskom.
Oskom, and see what the deal is, since we may have a payment in April, why, what's, what's the pullback? I'm gonna touch base with him tomorrow, uh, on, on all of these projects, to see where we're at, what, what the sign, moving of the sign as well as. How, if we decide who forwards or who's others.
Let's see then, the complex, you know? Look at the framing for the complex.
He was going to do that himself.
What's that?
You mean, we can at least do the concrete now until.
Yeah, I'd say that. We'll take the low bid on that. Midwest Foundation Repairs, that, the way I read it, they have the. I'd make a motion to, uh. Give the bid to them on, for the concrete repair.
Concrete worked in Midwest Foundation Repair. Spot specified. But, uh, yeah, I don't know, I guess on the bleachers, it'd be nice to know, like, save it's electric. I don't know, I guess, I looked at it, given seven row and electric motors to reel them in for another. Two thousand dollars, that's probably what we could get down. At least then they would go in and come out evenly, you know, so they kick at one end and. You know, tweet. Friction powers like shuffleboard. Friction like the spot, right? That's friction power.
And so I, I don't know. I would think they'd have some kind of drive tires or something.
I don't know, I didn't think of it, like your shuffleboard table with friction keeps them.
I don't know.
That's all fine, that's why. Drive shafts.
Just looking at the friction power on there, just Google it, and it shows, then it will be automatic, right, showed.
Two assemblies are linked together by a continuous drive shaft, driven by a half horsepower. Three-phase motor.
So that would be encrypted.
That's like exactly what you want. Well, there's your single wire. Yeah, that's exactly.
And even a seat modules, as well as the. First lose in a row.
We need to count, oh, we have to count.
Watch John.
Oh.
They got you.
Okay. Access denied.
That's really, definitely, but the same footprint, you know, even going out. That's what I'll know, six, six rows, if that'd be back, like. They had a three foot gap there.
Well, it'd be terrible down here, because you kind of walk them on the court anyway.
It's true. If they sit back a little bit. Yeah, usually that first row, they don't want anybody sitting on that first row.
I wouldn't want them to go out any further.
Yeah, it's like we were just saying, that first row, they usually don't want anybody to sit on it, anything.
And if you all volleyball down there, then you do it, it's too heavy. If you're trying to do two ports.
This way.
Well, one looks like it's a foot shorter. Seven, eight, six, ten. Guess that doesn't constitute next row, maybe. We're currently placing orders that would deliver late October or November, according to the factory's current timelines. I think realistically, based on install schedules and fabrication times, this would probably fall into a January project at this point. Demo would be a day and install would be two days.
Oh, it'd be like February or something, if it's gonna be.
Might as well wait till next year.
Right.
We can do it on spring break.
One, one twenty five day, it's saved not a holdup with the other group anymore. Uh, date, that, that date was given on June third. Um, I would assume even back at the completion date at least a month.
And then we're gonna get. It's very cheaper, so if we all need to do it. Like, we just need to say let's do it, and it gets done, it makes sense.
Well, like you said, back up a month, so now you're looking at February. So the other one, oh, yeah, I'd say, oh, I'd pull the trigger and just shoot for the middle of March.
Schedule, schedule the best.
I think the really big is then kind of shut down, having that gym down for three days, it's kind of the thing.
Well.
Especially as you get out of basketball, like, wreck basketball should be done by.
Little, little ones are done, and.
Well, and if they're new to order spring break, nothing's happening on spring break anyway.
Yeah.
Good word. And verifying that they're motorized, do you want me to ask why they're seven rows instead of six?
Oh, I think they, I think Johnson came at six, because if you look on their report, I think there's betting was there.
Okay. Yes, they are motorized.
I mean, my just thought here is, you guys have worked with them, you have their responsive contact. And they're cheaper now, so.
Say it might be a. Opportunity to contact Goosier Club to. Partner, maybe.
Well. Heard about my extra rep.
I mean, I can ask, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the thing, I mean.
Well, and in theory, I mean, you're through a whole nother season, so that would be. Just helpful for you, right, too.
Another use of it.
Really, so something, yeah, something in addition to what we started, what you're saying. Okay, that's what I thought here again.
You're like, why did I do that?
I'll, I'll bring it.
Best game skills. So what's everybody think then?
I kind of agree with Ashley, if you have had a good experience with the one. And obviously, he's willing to get back to you after hours, that shows something in today's world, because I think customers. Close right now, but.
That's a low bid too.
It has been, that was gonna be the next thing, so. I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it, right, and that's the thing goes.
Well, and I just, I have no. I don't know anything about this H. So I just know nothing about that, so. He had to have gotten it from somebody, and I know that Mr. Vaughn gave him a name last November. Because Colo had done it, so this may be that group, but I, I just, I.
Well, it would have been a little closer to them to your fault, so maybe schedule speed up a little bit, they can sooner than later type deal. My two cents.
We can take a motion to Townsend. Place in the bleachers in East Gym.
I'll motion to approve Townsend for the bleacher replacement in East Gym.
Ever say. By Townsend have been approved. Some garage doors and the. Bills, is that more active?
I think so. I looked, looked the other day, and actually, I talked to Scott Bugland. He said they were good, better than the old ones, which I guess that's not saying a lot.
That no news is gonna.
You're right, so.
They're not great.
Ones on the west side were done, and I looked.
With the Boag.
I didn't look, I guess, I looked at the, uh. Multi-purpose building, and that one was replaced, and the ones on the north side of the bus bar, and I forgot to look at the Boag building.
Yeah, I guess I know they were talking about. Door opener, not, I know what you're talking about. They were talking about.
All right, move on to super tip two four.
Okay, as we move forward, you might, um, see some additional contracts come across for approval. Um, one of the things, or requests that we've taken here over the past few weeks is, is due to high numbers in some of our programs. Um, so really, we need to establish a systemic way on how do we deal with high numbers of, of participants that are out. What I would recommend, and then ratio that I've used in the past, is. If you want to go above and beyond one paid assistant, it's, uh, an additional paid assistant for every fourteen participants, so you need twenty eight kids out. For an activity to pay two assistant coaches. That's not a baseline, remember, that's not saying if you don't have fourteen out, you don't get an assist, and that's not what we're saying. But we need to have a way to, to deal with, if we've got thirty girls out for volleyball, and we want them to play at three levels. Uh, they may need additional staff, they may need additional help. In the grand scheme of things, you know, our, uh, extracurricular budgets i- is not, uh, a, a major one, when we look at our finances. Uh, I think the other thing that comes with this, though, too. Is the expectation then that, okay, we have three staff members, and I expect games to be scheduled at all three levels, if not tournaments. Uh, because the idea there is you're providing so different in the classroom, right, you want your, um, teacher to student ratio to remain low, it's, it's, it's no different on the athletic field or the courts. But then we want to make sure that the idea behind that is kids are getting focused attention and then the ability to play. Um, the same thing, actually, I think we have occurring in, uh. Uh, football cheerleading, where we may have twenty four girls interested in, in, in doing it, right? Uh, with one coach, uh, and I know that she sought some help, well, we don't have one assistant there, so we might look into an assistant coach there. To me, with the expectation then, if we have a JV program for football. That would be the platform where maybe some of your girls that aren't cheering on Friday night get the opportunity to perform as well. We're still kind of working out the kinks in that, seeing, there has to be people interested in doing it too, right, so I mean, there's, there's that caveat as well. Part of the communication piece with this, though, is, you know, if we utilize a ratio like that, and you drop down to twenty two kids the next year, we're not paying two paid assistants. Questions on that? A good problem to have, but it's, it still creates an issue.
The key piece of that was just the paid piece that they, if they.
Correct.
Volunteers, all they would.
Yeah, we will encourage volunteers. But yes, yeah, absolutely. Um, I'm gonna skip over priorities for now, so I'll go over that at the end. We've got a couple of, of lunch and learns with new teachers, you know, we, we have a lot of new teachers to the district this year, so we've got two, and we'll have one more in August, those have been good. Teachers may be able to come in and get some paperwork done with Julie, um, grab fobs, laptops, and those types of things. You know, I think the question was around where are we at with some back-to-school planning, we're finalizing some pre-service PD, as well as getting some communication pieces ready. Um, one thing I brought up with, with both building principals is. Exploring the idea of a two hundred and sixty day contract for principals. It's, i- it can become difficult to, to do a lot of summer planning when they're not in a contract. So if that's, uh, an avenue we want to explore, it, it's certainly helpful from an administrative standpoint. Because just because school's out, the issues don't stop. And even the issues that are building principals have to deal with don't stop either, right? Uh, it's, it's a pretty common thing, the two fifteen to two twenties becoming a little more or less common. Well, how does that work, how do you compensate them, and they, they just have additional vacation days, their contracts look different, and they're granted vacation days to where, well. How much more do I have to pay them? On a two hundred and sixty day contract, they're still gonna come pretty darn close to the same amount of days worked as they would on two fifteen or two twenty. It just opens up some flexibility on our end to bring them in in the summer if we need to. Uh, so just something to keep in mind as we go through the school year, and we might bring that topic up again. And I know we've got some, the other area that. I guess we say, we have, we fill every position, we're gonna be a little light and tech. Um, because we had two paid stipends before, and one's not coming back. So the goal this year is to get through it with a one-paid stipend, and then explore a long-term, um, possibility in that position, because I know that. You know, there's some things, at least some from an updating standpoint, we need to do with our website, especially with contacts and those types of things, so. Um, that is something that's certainly, uh, at the forefront, when we, when I have to talk with Greg and, and Julie, that we need to make sure we. Prioritize what's that gonna look like moving forward, in, in a fiscally responsible manner.
I think, gosh, and stay in age, can it be a class, maybe incorporated as part of a class, they've got to do that, web design is so easy now.
Yeah, and it's, I'm, it's really not in the design anymore, because typically, the design is there for you, it's just, it's maintenance, right, it's, it's keeping the information up to date, and, and those types of things. It's possible, yeah. Uh, we had, there was some conversation about door handles, and, you know, whether we want to install those with the personnel we have, I would recommend not to. Um, based on a couple of things, it's not, we're installing them on some old doors, and I don't think the process is quite as simple as it may appear on the surface with, uh, these commercial handles. And that's just based on, you know, we have a shared maintenance director with G M G, and so they did some of that up there. And I think he got two in, and, and then parcel, and then hired someone to do it. Um, there's just a little more that goes into it with those, you know, sometimes the, the holes might not be true, there might be some, uh. Some drill work that has to be done, so. I think when, when you break it down, the time it would take, if we did it internally, you're probably gonna end up with a wash and labor costs. And the peace of mind knowing it was done professionally might be worth it. Now, keep in mind, that's all umbrellaed under the safety green. Okay, so the door handles we paid for by the safety green.
Before you move on to the calendar. Can I go back to the tech?
Back to any angle.
Sorry. Uh, we're using one, and I think that's great, but what, you want to answer now, have you thought about the criteria people use to evaluate against to say, this isn't working?
Yeah, um.
Who need to think?
This is not going to work long term.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, just I.
Greg's aware of that, Greg will tell you that, because he's got nearly a full class load. So we're in a position right now that we're getting through this year and making plans for how does this look moving forward. This will not be a long-term solution, one on this stipend, it's just, it's not, it's not workable.
It was a little bit of the timing.
Yeah.
W- we did reach out to another district.
See if it's shared.
If there was a sharing, that's what we would like to do, yeah, ultimately.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that may be what we end up doing, is sharing with another district, a half-time or part-time staffers.
I'm just thinking, I guess, the day-to-day maintenance.
Correct.
Things with their phone book problems, so like, that's something that we can probably run off somebody else. And not like a great plate, but I get that you've got restrictions, so those, that would be the only piece that I'd be concerned that, you know, somebody's setting for four weeks with a book and a phone book, and can be a classroom, because.
Yeah, I think that Greg will still handle the day-to-day stuff, um, the, the part that Ree was doing, uh. Greg's handling, but the things that she was handling really could probably be done at, you know, like after school's out. Keep in mind, we still have our B D H people that support us for infrastructure and things like that, they can dial it remotely, things like that, uh, and so we still have them on contract, um, too. So we may have to lean on that maybe.
But it's certainly something we're gonna have to find a longer-term solution to. But it's certainly something we're gonna have to find a longer term solution to.
So, Joshua, I just want to make sure, like, hi, yes.
Thank you, yeah. Uh, the calendar, so I sent you in that uh weekly report, some corrections that were made, I. Wouldn't call them changes to the calendar. As it didn't, it was just correcting some incorrect information that was on there. It still meets the, the letter that's in board policy, um. There may be some bervish we look at removing from board policy as we kind of deviate from the old one eighty or hundred and seventy nine days. Farther we deviate from that, I don't know how much sense it makes to keep the number in there. Just to stick to the one thousand eighty hours and and pull the days number out of there. I don't feel this constitutes a change of the calendar, but if the board wants to reopen this up for. Uh, public hearings, certainly can. But there's no change necessarily made, it was just corrections. The hour, the hour calculator did change, I mean. But they reflect what was on there, okay, they, I shouldn't say that, the hours calculator didn't change. The total that was on there was incorrect, the total that's on there now is correct.
So we didn't have to change dates or change start.
No, no, no date changes, it's just, it's just corrections to incorrect.
We still need to.
Yep.
In excess of.
Still, 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 still have a little built in time, um.
We considered it, you know, like if we were gonna, if. He was gonna recommend, you know, okay, we have to go an extra day.
Right, we have a third day on here, we're not there, so.
We have to Christmas greater.
Yeah.
Along the same lines, but not necessarily something that's going to be up for action now is. The first week of September, um, R V T V is coming into town. And as I gather more information on that, it sounds like it's a fairly. Big thing as far as how many people it brings in, traffic congestion, so. As we look forward, it may be something where we might explore the idea of an early out on that Thursday that they're here. From a number of standpoints, number one, I don't know that we want to fight that from a transportation standpoint, first and foremost, it's one of the biggest things. I would also give your families an opportunity, you know, that's kind of a neat deal to to go experience those things as well, so just something to think about moving forward. Probably um, and or obviously. I'm gonna talk about the legislative priorities. And answer any questions you have, so the handout I gave you talks about the uh priority statements, um, I think is what those are called, the one through seven on the back. You're gonna see a list of things. And really those are the resolutions, so those are what we're choosing. Um, so you know, I highlighted the, more of the priority statements to kind of look at. And so when you think about this, um, what this is, is what do we want? Lawmakers to focus on in the next legislative session, right? It's not, well, we need safety, we need new door handles, well, that, you gotta think of it larger, right? It's what, what are we telling our lawmakers, this is what's important in the next legislative session? So if you look at that first priority statement, the resolutions really is where the meat of those things are. That's what, that's what we're saying, we want to focus on this. With number one, remember they made drastic changes to the A A. And that, it, it, maybe not this year, but over time, that's gonna have a detrimental effect on small districts. Uh, so I think that's, that's a big thing, student achievement, keep in mind, every one of these things are great things to focus on, it's not like you're, you're. Every, anything you choose is, is, is a good option, student achievement's on there as well, so the question is, well, how do we decide as a district, you know, what's important to Baxter, well? What do we rely on or what do we need to ensure? That is, as I meet with legislators, that they're focusing on for, for lawmaking. Uh, the A A to me is a big piece for Baxter. Uh, we, we get a lot of services through the A A. And the, the, the bit of flow through that, that comes through to us, isn't substantial enough for us to replace those services apples to apples if, if they're taken away. You know, the idea behind the A A was, it's almost a subsidized system. And what I mean by that is, yes, your, your larger schools are kind of subsidizing your smaller schools, but what larger schools have to understand over time is. They do benefit from this as well. Um, because what happened to small schools, stopped existing, people are still gonna live there, you're gonna take on that geography, that's gonna create an issue for larger schools, so it's important. Those A A systems that subsidize that way, it's important that, um. I feel, you know, my duty obviously is, is to the Baxter community, but at large, there isn't, to me, an idea of the greater good. And when we started eliminating things like A A's, while that might benefit a, a really property-rich district or a district that brings in a lot of money. Is that. An end to the greater good for education as a whole. And I think that's something that has to be kept in mind by leaders across the state that I maybe think was forgotten this last spring. So when I focused on one, that was kind of one of the areas I was focused on, and then student achievement, of course. Uh, when we look at two, we're talking about teacher recruitment licensure, uh, we got through this hiring season, right, which is great. Um, but that's always gonna be a focus in there as well. Uh, three can kind of be misleading, right, um, especially if you're a small district, you think reorganization, I don't want anything to do with reorganization, right? But sharing incentives are extremely beneficial for us. So if we can push and get the legislature to move our sharing, our operational sharing. Number from twenty one to twenty nine, and we can share more positions and generate more revenue and maybe um. Save on our bottom line, because we don't have to hire that full-time person. Those things benefit Baxter immensely. And so when we look at that, that's kind of one of the things that I take away from that is that, that operational sharing piece. Uh, I'll let you read through some of those, but the other one I'll just discuss with the other one I had talked about a little bit was, was number six. You know, state supplemental aid is going to become increasingly important. As this minimum salary bill. Comes into effect at the, really at the end of next year and things kind of settle a little bit. We have to rely on S S A to avoid the issue of compaction if we can. Meaning we're not putting teacher at fifty thousand in year one and year eight, guess what they're still making? Fifty thousand, because we can't afford to give them any sort of incremental raise, we rely on S, we rely on S S A. To be able to avoid some of those issues. Um, unfunded mandates were kind of falls into that too, you know, if they decide you have to have this. But we're not gonna help you pay for it, right, that would be an unfunded mandate. And then there, like I said, any one of these, when you flip to the back, it, it breaks them down by priority statement, what I'd like you guys to do is. Select five, they'll want me to select four. Um, when we send this in, and so every school sends this in, the I O Association School Boards, they use that data to kind of prioritize where are they gonna push legislators this next, next session to go. Are there any questions on those? Or, or, or why, why aren't we looking at this and, or why are we looking at this?
I think some of it for me is hard because I look at like number seven.
Right.
You know, make private schools accountable, like public schools are, but I know that's not gonna happen. Right, because they already passed a law, they, they, that's done.
It's important to focus our attention on areas that we know that maybe, or maybe that we feel. Have a better chance of being impacted.
I, I think it's an important one, but it's like, I. Allegedly, they're, they're not gonna listen to that, so that's, it's hard because it's all of our tax dollars go to these private schools that. I don't, right, we have public schools, I mean, you gotta get down to the dollar and.
And, and remember, what we choose, and what we choose this year will differ from what we choose next year and, and. Within that same line of thinking, if there is a substantial shift in party lines down there, then maybe. You do switch those up, right, um, I, I understand what you're saying with, with what's been passed. Uh, with the demographics uh in the House and the Senate. What's the likelihood, we can put this as a priority, but what's the likelihood of anything changing on there? Um, so we certainly want to be cognizant of selecting priorities that we feel. We can enable change in as well.
Now, are there any on here that you think, if you were to bring it up, that would mean a change in the way that would go negative for us, like, just because I think something that would be. The attention's gonna be a good, good thing.
Well, I mean, it's, it depends on your take on property taxes.
I don't know, like, by saying, saying, this is my priority, maybe what I consider a priority, but legislation doesn't agree with what they're thinking.
That's true, and remember, they're going to gather every school's data and compile it into one, so. Is there one specifically you're thinking about?
No, I'm just learning this process by saying, like, do we turn this into them, then do they gather additional feedback on what we mean by this being a priority, or are we just like? You know, access.
There, in that, in that um expanded document that I have the link to, it'll kind of talk about what they mean when, when they say those things.
Yeah.
Uh, but I understand what you're saying, our, what we see. Within that topic area might be different than what somebody else sees in that topic area. Um, I really think the advocacy, but this is great, right, um, but the advocacy in meeting with local legislators probably goes a lot farther than this. Than, than something like this does.
Yeah, okay, well, that's fair, I just. Learning, I'm sorry.
I heard you check almost all the.
I know, I, you could, yeah, they're all, this truly is, you know, they say there's no wrong answers, you know, they normally, that's not true, like, there really is not.
Mental health for school safety and.
You can almost make that one.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
So hand in hand, right?
I mean, that should be a constant.
Right.
Topic.
But again, like Ashley says, what does that mean? How are they addressing that? Because how we feel, maybe that, we, that would be addressed, maybe they're gonna come back and say. Okay, everyone needs to hire an S R L, then now you have an unfunded mandate on your hands. Remember, they did say that for schools with over two thousand students last legislative session. You have to play S R L, so it is, there is kind of an interpretation piece in there that can be difficult too.
I guess I feel that the, the minimum salary deal, that's. That's kind of walking the line of an unfunded mandate in my.
The, and, and.
I mean, I can't, they're gonna give you some money, but it's like. Yeah, that doesn't, that's not the whole picture, so.
Yeah, yeah, the, the indirect impact sometimes, or, or the foresight to see five years from now. Certainly is, I would say. This certainly had the potential to become an unfunded mandate.
Right. Check next to the hole.
Checker and X.
I feel like when they do the retention, they're gonna try to retain teachers or young teachers, teachers.
Well, and that, part of that too is the licensure, you know, one of the things they have done that's helped is enabled some alternative routes to licensure. Um, and that for rural districts, that can be extremely important, you know, in certain areas, if you have so many hours in that area like business. Uh, in the private sector, and those can apply to license, the teacher licensure for a business, um. Business license.
Yeah, we have several non-traditional teachers here.
Well, they talk about the resolution, like, so, they probably go. At six, priority of six, they said a resolution is property taxes, it's like, so if we were to say, okay. What are we saying if we check property tax, so are we saying if we, even more property?
What they're saying, they're gonna put your money in the pocket, I need to give. Well, they for ensure efforts to minimize property tax. Desparities created by additional levy rate without compromising additional resources to school districts. Maintain the ability of districts to be driven, dispressing, and these improve transparency and limits on use of. Taxing for the financing.
Think they're trying to push property tax equitability um. Amongst what we consider property-rich, property poor districts.
That was the last one.
I'll be back. Yeah, and what I'll do is, because they, we have to have them in before our next board meeting. So I'll compile our top four and then communicate that with them on my weekly reports. As well as my board meeting.
You finished?
Any other questions on the report, that's all I have.
No, sorry, I'll, thank you.
Do you think the questions are first? Did you enjoy your first fun days twenty four?
It was fun, it was warm, we cooled down next year at the moment.
Never will.
Yeah, it was good, Buzo in here was good, this was a popular place that day.
Yeah, good.
I'll take a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Very sad. If you're into seven twenty seven.
Thank you. There wasn't anything on there about. Teacher killing?
There was not, not specifically.